Hey, when you tell me this, that means we're ready. All right, you're ready now? All right. Let's go ahead and get started. This is unusual for us to see this many people here, so thank you for being here. This is awesome. You know, and I like the sunglasses, you know. I think maybe we might stand a new trend here. Maybe all the councilmen and mayors start wearing sunglasses. That'd be awesome. So, okay, to start out, Ambassador Tyler Jacobson, give us a opening prayer, if he would.
Our dear, kind Father in Heaven, we are so grateful to be gathered together as a city to discuss the needs of our citizens here and our friends and families, and we ask you to please bless it as we make decisions tonight that we will do so in the best interests of those that reside here and that will reside here one day. We are grateful for all the blessings that was given us here in Spanish Fork, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Ambassador Councilman Menon Hall, lead us in the pledge allegiance. Please rise and repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, through Republic of One Nation, under the Constitution.
Okay. As you can see, that we're missing one person. Councilmember Beck is on a family trip, I think in Hawaii. So, she didn't invite us, so we're here and we're staying here, so we'll go on without her. Employee of the quarter, who's going to handle that? That'll be next on the agenda.
So, Chris Thompson will be, and then Dell Robinson. So whoever wants to vote first.
Okay, could I have Paul Taylor and John Waters come up here? So, Paul Taylor is in our water division. He's the foreman over the drinking water. So, the citizens of Spanish Fork have a lot of thanks to give to Paul for having good drinking water and reliable drinking water. And one of the things that I've noticed as Paul has really taken on the reins of being in charge of the drinking water system and being the foreman over that crew is things have run so efficiently and the crew works hard and they're happy. And I think that's a good, that's a good indication you have a good leader, is if the guys that he works with are happy and they work hard and they're successful. And I think that's really the reason, another reason why they're so happy is they're successful and they've accomplished a lot of great things. And I voted for Paul several times. In fact, in my computer, I have this little file, and in it, I have what I write up for why I think Paul should have it, and then I just copy and paste it so that I keep voting for him. And now he's finally made it, and I'm really, I'm really glad for him. But I was reading through all the comments of why he got it, and I realized that there were several different people that were writing comments and voting for him in our utility billing office and other aspects of the public works. And then all the department heads voted for you to get this, and it's well deserved. And I'd like to present it to you, and then maybe give John a minute to say some things. But it comes with a gift, and just like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate working with you.
I'd just like to express my appreciation for Paul. He makes my job a lot easier. The city is a lot safer. We have a lot safer drinking water by having him. He does all of our water sampling. He does our state reports for water samples every quarter. I honestly would probably be at a loss without him. He's a real special guy, and he comes from a really good family, too.
That always helps, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Awesome. Whoa, 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 whoa! Everybody turns that down when we offer that speech. Thank you. We got some people here, and those are well deserved. Come on down. Uh-oh, you brought your sidekick.
Thanks for having us.
Hey, how's it going?
Really appreciate it. If we could have, Ken, you can't stand in the back of the room. I know it's more comfortable back there.
Where's Sue? Sue?
She's going to be mad at you.
I know. I'll be in trouble, but it's okay. It's okay.
Well, I can leave, right?
No.
Look what happened.
Hey, thanks for being brave. These guys aren't that scary. Hey, we want to introduce Ken Bell. Ken's one of the new additions to our, not relatively new, he's been here a little while now, but welcome additions to our Buildings and Grounds Division. Ken's one of those handy men that can do it all, and I know if Cody were here, he would tell you, Ken's a lifesaver for him. We got a lot of, a lot of buildings to maintain in this city and very little staff, so we do pride ourselves in doing more with less, and we do it with guys like Ken. And so I was thrilled when, when he was selected for this honor. Ken and Sue are lifetime residents of this community, and so we love them and appreciate them, and we're thrilled to have him as part of our team. So I'm going to let his supervisor, Bill Bushman, say a couple of things about Ken.
Thank you. I think Dale pretty well said it all, but I want to add a couple of things. It's interesting that Ken has worked under several different bosses since he's been employed here, and every time he gets transferred to somebody new, the other ones just cry a bucket of tears because they're losing him. They really like having him in their crew. He does a lot of things that other people can't do. He came with a long list of abilities before he ever got to the city of Spanish Fork, so we're lucky to have him. Every time I mention to Cody Hanks, congratulate them on having accomplished some certain task or finished a project, he always points at Ken every single time, like he's the one that did it. And I think they probably share the responsibilities, but he has a lot of skills, he's good natured. Often people will call to ask us to do something for him in one of their buildings, and sometimes they simply say, can you send Ken over? Because we'd prefer to have him. So, that happens a lot, too. Congratulations. Appreciate your service, and you've done a fantastic job. Thank you.
We'd like to have the spouses come up because we know, we know this job's fairly demanding, and they have to sacrifice as well, so. You have my permission.
You bring the spouse up because there might be money in that envelope.
I'll get it in.
Yeah, I figured.
All right, thank you so much. Like I was saying, we've got some great employees that work here for the city, and we're blessed to have them. Okay, we're going to move to public comments. I know I've got a couple of individuals that would like to come up. If Mr. Phelps would like to come up first, and then them other bodies. Yeah, we'll let Reese come up after him, and then we'll go in for there.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this, City Council members and the citizens of Spanish Fork. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and introduce myself to you. My name's Jim Phelps, and I'm running for Utah County Sheriff. I'm retired, 25 years with US Marshal Service. During my career, I was part of the Saw Lake area metro gang unit for three years. I spent 10 years on the governing board. I spent, oh geez, about three and a half years with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. Worked very close with the Attorney General's Office. There's Secure Task Force, the Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force. Those are areas that are really important to me as far as the sheriff goes. We get, I'm very concerned about drug problems, very concerned about gang activities, very concerned about sexual predators. I have the experience to know how to help combat some of those issues that we have at the county. Very familiar with what caused problems resulted in Rio Grande, and I want to make sure that they do not come down to this county. I was born and raised in Lehigh. This has been my county, lived here my entire life. My wife and I raised our five kids, and I want, now, they're getting a little bit older. Hoping, my two oldest just recently got married, I'll be having grandkids, and I want those grandkids to be raised in an environment that is similar to the way I was able to raise my kids, the way I grew up. I love this county. Saw Lake was a fun place to work as a police officer. We kept real busy, but every time I came over the point at the night, at the end of the night, I'm like, wow, I'm really lucky. I love this county. It's a totally a different feel. I want to keep that feel. I want to be able to protect our citizens. I want to protect your families and your property. Those are my reasons for running. I could retire and just sit back, but I don't want to do that. I want to, you know, help leave a legacy here. I want a future for our kids. I want to protect our families, and that's why I'm running for sheriff. Appreciate you giving me a minute just to introduce myself to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that, Jim. Reese, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Reese Demille with Republic Services. This is Brenda Upright. We know most of you. I appreciate you allowing us to just take one quick second. We're not here for any specific agenda other than to tell you how much we appreciate you allowing us to work with your city. We pick up approximately, a little over 750,000, three quarters of a million containers in your city every year. It's a major task, especially how you're growing, and so you're forcing us to expand our services, and we appreciate that. We've got a brand-new truck sitting in our yard and a new man that we just hired, and a lot of that has to do with the growth in your city. So, we just wanted to thank you for that. We brought you some sugar cookies from Neader's.
Why don't you just send them right there by Kimberly?
You can bid them out or whatever you'd like to do for the city, but.
That'd be great.
And if you have any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer them. I don't know if you have any, but anything we can do for you?
I think we sure appreciate your service and what you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Amanda Taylor. Would you like to come up? Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for giving me a minute of your time. I'm actually here on behalf of our neighborhood that was here last month. We just wanted to say thank you for all that you're doing regarding Highway Six and appreciate your, your work. We're grateful it's being patrolled by the Spanish Fork City Police. We're grateful that you're going forward with the tunnel under Highway Six. We appreciate that. We're also grateful that you're installing a stoplight and possibly a roundabout by Diamond Fork Apartments. I know that a lot of us are grateful that you're finishing the trail. We love the trail, so thank you for doing that and appreciate that it's maintained, and what a gift. And Spanish Fork's an amazing place to live, and we're grateful for you, so thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Look at that.
Where's Dave Anderson? Keep him away.
And they're cold. Thank you. Oh, look at that. See, there's a guy you're thinking of. It's awesome.
It's like the boys.
Thanks, George.
Is this a standard operating procedure? This is really setting a bad precedent.
And he says, "We're like the boys."
Sitting good precedent, I'd say.
Man, as you'll notice, this is a new standard we started this year. When you come to council meeting, bring cookies, drinks. It's awesome. Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public that'd like to come up and address the mayor and the council? All right. Seeing none, I'll go to council comments. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, the only thing to report, as we had discussed before, the American Legion and the VFW for the citizens interested in all, they had a combined dinner. Unfortunately, I was out with the flu, was not able to attend, but it was a great thing, great thing to see the Veterans Council growing and being strong, and the two organizations working for the benefit of veterans and for our community. That's all I have.
Great. Councilman Menon Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick rotary meeting today. We had a rotary meeting that Councilman Argyle and myself attended. We had one a couple of weeks ago, too, that we attended. That one, I haven't told a lot of people about this, but neither is the rotary, and some of it's by design even, but we had a really neat couple from BYU. They're students at BYU that escaped, are refugees from North Korea, and that's in the news quite a bit right now, but we were, we were lucky to have them speak to us at Rotary, talk about their story of how they escaped and what life is like here. A story of freedom and a married couple that the husband left and the wife had to wait a year to get there as well. So it was a neat story, neat time at Rotary. Rotary is one of our great volunteer organizations. We're hoping to get the Kims, is their name, to speak to some other organizations, namely the League of Cities and Towns, and share their story so they can make a little income while they're being students over there at BYU. So Rotary going well. The League of Cities and Towns that I mentioned, we're having our weekly policy committee meetings up at the legislature. You've, you've heard some of the legislation in the news that's going on up there, some of it you haven't, and frankly, for the benefit of us as citizens, we hope, we hope some of it dies without you hearing about it. Maybe even in a public setting, I'd like to thank Seth for all the time he spends up there, along with the rest of Spanish Fork staff. I can tell you, your city is, is pretty reliable when it comes to the years of service that they have in local government, and they're relied on by the League of Cities and Towns when it comes up to legislation at Capitol Hill to speak for it or against it on how it would affect us as local citizens and local government. So we'll continue to fight the good fight when we need to up there during the session. It's about halfway over. You can see Seth's wearing a pen that says "The League Army" on it, and that's kind of what we call ourselves when we go up there en masse to try to show legislators that we represent local government. We represent you when it, when it comes to legislation that's being discussed up there. Open invitation to any citizens that want to hitch a ride. We go up there on a weekly basis, sometimes multiple times a week, but if any, if any citizen wants to hitch a ride and come up and spend a few hours to half a day with us up there, you're more than welcome. It's kind of an interesting process to see how it works. The Active and Healthy Movement. Mayor, how much time do I have? I could spend all day on that.
I know you could.
Okay. He's giving me the, he's giving me the cutoff quicker than anything, but the Active and Healthy Movement is still going. Gangbusters. We had an executive board meeting last week that was attended by Nick Jarvis from the League of Cities and Towns is also, as well as Locke Eddinger from Intermountain Healthcare and Kai Miner from Intermountain Healthcare. They basically came down to look at how we're spending their money, how we're spending their grant funds. I'm happy to report they came away from that meeting in their words, I wrote them down, impressed and inspired for what we're trying to do for the physical health and the mental health of our citizens through the Active and Healthy Movement. So if you haven't joined the Facebook page, look up SF Active and Healthy. That'll, please join. That'll tell you all the events that we're trying to do, along with QPR trainings, the question persuade and refer trainings that we're pushing out there to try to help people gain access to resources for mental health in our community. It's a problem that we're struggling with down here in South Utah County, and we think we can, we can curb the trend by, by these tools that we're lucky enough to have. We have six trainers in the city that are trained to teach those classes. We're teaching businesses in the Chamber of Commerce right now, but it'll soon open up to the public, and you'll be able to, to take that hour-long class and know what to say to your friends or family that may be struggling with mental health. Today, Chad notified me of, of another tragedy in our community just last week, and then I went back to my office an hour later and had a friend sit down and tell me his struggles that, that he's just been dealing with for a month now. And, and so mental health is, is an important thing, just as important as our physical health, and there's a trend that we have to curb here in, in town. And I'm excited for the Active and Healthy Initiative to help try and do that. So if any of you have any time to volunteer or help out with that cause, I can tell you it's a worthy cause. Would love to take your name and number and, and have you help us. We're going to fight that good fight, too. So, other than that, Mayor, we've had a airport board meeting that Chris attended for me while I was out of town, so I'll have more to report on that next council meeting.
That's right. Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Mike says, the local officials' day up at the legislature was, was good. It's always good to get up there and rub shoulders with our lawmakers on the Hill and had some meetings with, with our local representatives. We recently had bills and bagels and have another one coming up, and encourage any of you to attend that. It's coming up on Saturday morning. The next one is, is it?
Twenty-fourth.
The 24th, February 24th. That's a big day, because that's my birthday. But now you won't forget it, will you, scouts? So if you want, you can attend that. Our local legislators, Senator Francis Gibson and Deidre Henderson and Mike McCall, they'll be discussing any bills that, that have a big effect on, on our local community, and so encourage all to come out and, and discuss these things. Get involved as much as you can. We had a downtown on Main meeting, discussed some of the activities that we'll be planning for 2018, mostly some of the movies in the park that many took advantage of. We're going to plan to continue doing those on Mondays. We've done those on Fridays in the past and have more success doing those on Mondays, and so we're just pinning down some different movies that we're going to be showing for that and, and events like the, that we did last year with the Volkswagen Show on, on Main Street and things like that. So downtown on Main meeting was good, and things are, things are going well with them to continue to introduce our beautiful downtown to a lot of people. Had the Chamber of Commerce banquet. Heather Yowds not with us tonight, but I'll report that our chamber banquet was well attended, and we installed our new president and outgoing incoming for 2018 for the chamber, and things are, things are well there. That was a fun night, and a lot of great awards well received. Anything I missed on that?
We did well, other than our own, Councilman Beck received.
Yeah.
An award, so that was really nice.
She's not here to defend herself.
That's right.
We also had our monthly chamber meeting where we discussed getting things going for the farmer's market. It's weird to think that that's just around the corner, but we have the best farmer's market in the state of Utah here in Spanish Fork, and so we've discussed things like that, as well as some of the upcoming dates that, that we have coming up as far as our new networking lunch, which is February 21st down at the Justice Center. And we have a ribbon cutting tomorrow for Spa and Float. Summit Spa and Float. I'm going to guess, I don't even know what a float is.
Oh, I'll tell you.
What?
It's like an egg. It's like an egg pod that you sit in and you float. You're weightless for a little while. It's salt in it. I haven't tried it yet.
Oh, sure you have.
I'm glad Councilman Menon Hall helped us. With the only female that's on the council not being here, he was able to help us with a spa.
Yeah. Billy's really good.
Thanks, Mike. So that, tomorrow, we're having a ribbon cutting for them, and wanted to congratulate Wiggy Wash on the business of the month. And so we met down there and congratulated them, and they are a great partner in our community. They do a lot for, for the city of Spanish Fork, a lot that is, is not really brought out in the spotlight, and so we really thank them for being a part of our community. And lastly, had a solid waste board meeting that I attended over at Springville City. Over the last three years, we're up 30,000 tons of garbage in Spanish Fork. I think that a lot of that is because of the green waste. A lot of people are putting their grass clippings and things in their garbage cans, and so we, as far as trips to the landfill, they more than doubled. So I say landfill, but I meant the transfer station in Springville. So more than doubled there, so we're working on some expansion ideas, and as I mentioned last time, possibly load leveling, which means instead of Monday maybe being your garbage day, it may change to a different day to help offset all that garbage going into the transfer station on Monday being the busiest day. Other than that, things are well there. A new fence going in out at the landfill to help with keeping the blowing garbage in. And other than that, Mayor, was that a lot?
Well, you're going to break Mike's record, aren't you?
I yield the rest of my time to Councilman Argyle, then.
All right, Councilman Argyle.
Thanks, Brandon. I, I want to just second bills and bagels. It is early in the morning, but we have some very special representatives who are Deidre Henderson, Francis Gibson, and Mike McCall, who represent our town. And there are some serious things going on in this, in this state, and they're concerned about them, and they're concerned about our city. We're lucky to have them, that they, they live within our city bounds also, city boundaries, two of them. But it gives you an opportunity to hear what's going on and, and what they are supporting, and they always encourage us to call them, and I would encourage you to call them, because they have an impact on our lives. And if you've been watching, some of the stuff that's been going on with Governor Herbert talking about, when Mike talks about our health and wellness in our community, we have, we can make an impact as a community here. Opioids are, are huge right now, and suicide in our teens are overwhelming, and as a community, we need to make a difference here. And our state representatives are concerned with those issues, and yes, they will help pass and help support groups and stuff like that, but with our health and wellness that Mike's on and takes care of, we have an opportunity to, as a community, and, and locally support this and help so that we can curb some of this stuff. It, it really upsets me when somebody says that a teenager has decided to end his life because we needed that person in our community, and, and we need to do something about that. And this, this trend needs to change, and as a community, we can do that. And I want to encourage you, if you have the opportunity to be involved, please, please do so. We, we need the input of the community. We need the support of the community to do this. We, we need to turn this around. This, this is not a trend that we want to continue, and Chief Adams will be the first one to tell you. His officers, this is not what they were going to respond to. They want to, to respond to other things, and, and it continues in our community. We have a special community. We have great volunteers and good citizens, and we can make a difference there. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. I had our MAG meeting this week. That's our Mountain Land Association of Governments. It's where the, all the mayors of Utah County meet together. We talk about transportation needs, and what they do is they list all the projects each city wants to do that are important, and it's a list about, well, the big list is over 100, but they have so much money they can spend, and usually the top 25 to 40 get funded, and we can report that, I think we've got, how many? Three. We've got the top three plus a bunch of others, so pretty impressive that we have there. We're trying to represent Spanish Fork here, meet the transportation needs that we have here in, in our city and in our surrounding cities, working together with them and trying to get things that we can move people around. We have 41,000 people in our city now. When I was a kid, that was 3,500. And so you can see- And so, you can see we're growing and we need to meet the needs of that growth because we want everybody to stay here and live here and we want our kids to live here. And so, we wanna make this just as good a city when we were kids for them today. So, it's an important meeting and we're represented well there on that. So, okay, let's move into Spanish Fork 101. Oh.
Yeah, we did probably.
Hi Jacoaks. Hi Jacoaks.
We did probably.
Yeah. What a classy.
That's a move out Sunday.
Okay.
Good kid.
It's really a pleasure for me to introduce two gentlemen that are with us here this evening. I certainly appreciate them taking time to join us. They're with the Economic Development Corporation of Utah. Mr. Scott Harbertson, who I believe previously served as the mayor of Farmington and served with the League of Cities and Towns president a few years ago, is that right? We're grateful to have him here with us. And Michael Flynn, who works with EDC Utah. I guess in my words, I would say Mike kinda manages all of the day-to-day operations of EDC Utah. I met Mike almost twelve years ago, shortly I think after you started working for EDC Utah and shortly after I came to work for Spanish Fork City. Since then, Mike's kinda been around representing EDC Utah and the state in a few different, very unique capacities. Mike, correct me if I'm off a little bit, it was Corona or Riverside, Southern California. He went with the express responsibility of trying to attract companies from that part of the world to relocate here to Utah. And then went to the other side of the country, North Carolina, where he did some of that same work for EDC Utah and also for a more local organization in North Carolina. I've always been very impressed with Mike and everybody at EDC Utah with the great work that they do in representing all of us as Utahns and in doing some very specific things, in my words, to make our quality of life in Utah the best that it possibly can be. Again, I think they represent the state well. They represent and have, in very specific capacities, represented I think Spanish Fork very, very well. And we look forward to having an expanded relationship with EDC Utah moving forward, which is a big part of the reason that they're here tonight, just to explain to you a little bit about what they do, what they can do for us and what we'll be working on in the months and years to come. So, with that being said, Mike, I'll just turn things over to you. Pretty straightforward, just advance.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the chance to come and speak with you tonight. I would like to apologize on behalf of Mayor Harbertson, he was in charge of our contribution to the snacks tonight.
Come on Scott. Hey, you know if I would've gone to your city, I would've brought some.
I apologize.
Yeah, we'll take a rain check.
As Dave mentioned, my name's Mike Flynn. I've worked economic development in the state of Utah off and on for about fifteen years. I actually had the good fortune to move back to Utah two years ago today to take this new role that I have with Economic Development Corporation of Utah. I've put some slides together to sort of give a general overview of who we are, what we do, some specific initiatives we wanna work on with Spanish Fork City. But would welcome any questions. Sometimes I have a tendency to get too far in the weeds, so if parts of it aren't clear or need some explanation, please let me know. So, this is just some general information about the organization. We are called the statewide EDO, so Economic Development Organization. We are unique in that we are a public-private partnership. So, a third of our funding of about three million dollars total comes from private industry. We have about three hundred businesses that fund our initiative, companies you would expect like the utilities and big banks and big real estate companies. About a third of our money comes from a contract we have with the state of Utah, the Governor's Office of Economic Development to do this specific type of economic development on behalf of the state, so the corporate recruitment function. And then about a third of our money comes from local governments. We have about seventy cities and counties that contract with us to help them in different aspects of economic development preparedness, corporate recruiting, business development, marketing, research, things like that. We've been doing this for thirty years. Our thirty-year anniversary was actually in August of 2017. So, we spun out of the Salt Lake Chamber originally about thirty years ago and we're a statewide organization effective about nineteen eighty-nine and have been doing it ever since. We also have a unique relationship in this part of the state in that we manage Utah County's economic development on behalf of the county. So, they contracted with us about a decade ago to have an employee down here that manages coordination and different things on behalf of Utah County Economic Development, but they're an employee of ours and work as part of our team. And I'll explain why that makes sense. So, this is our work chart. My title is Chief Operating Officer, so as Dave mentioned, my job is really to run the program. So, all the people that have functional responsibility specifically around business development, so that would be the active part of working with a company that's considering operations in Utah. We have a pretty extensive research department. Obviously, a lot of our projects are pretty data-heavy, data-driven, companies that need to understand costs and taxes and real estate and logistics and labor. And so, we have a pretty exhaustive research team. We have a marketing team that helps market the state of Utah and communities in Utah on a national level so that companies, people refer to as site selection consultants. There's this cottage industry of people that help companies move from place to place and we market pretty heavy to that group of people. We have a function that we call Global Strategy and Outreach. And the idea there is, a lot of our projects come to us. So, a company will call us and say, hey, we're thinking about Utah or Utah County or Spanish Fork, can you help work with us as we do this analysis? There's another part of our business is we decide who we would like to have do business in Utah, or in this instance, do business in your community. And we proactively go out to work with those companies and encourage them to put operations in the state. And we've had some good success with that over the last few years. And the last part of our organization that we'll talk about more in depth in a second is what we call Public Development. And Public Development, the idea behind Public Development is to work with communities to help them become better prepared to handle a project that our business development team will bring to them. So, the general idea has been that in recruiting a company to your community or the state, the actual recruitment is probably about step seven or eight of a ten-step process. And there's a lot of things you should do as a community before that to become better prepared, to understand who's gonna be a good fit in your community, to understand what your competitive advantages as a community might be. And a gentleman named Max Backland runs that for us and we'll talk about that again a little more in a second. Our CEO is Teresa Foxley, formerly worked for the Governor's Office of Economic Development. We have a pretty lean staff. We don't have a lot of overhead. We try to put most of our money into the program. And then Mr. Harbertson, is our Community Relations Representative, helps us interface more successfully with communities. So, I'm thinking about talking with you tonight. There I think are four main things that we plan to work with Dave on more over the next few years. And I wanted to jump into each of these in a little more detail. So, the first is this concept of Public Development. It's really our Economic Development Preparedness Initiative, so helping communities understand themselves, how they compete, where they compete effectively. It's an exercise in leveraging the tools and expertise that EDC Utah has. So, we invest about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in various data, information, research sets that then we can help communities access and help understand their communities a little bit better. With the goal of us ultimately being more successful in the second part of this, which is the business development part of our organization, so the companies that are looking to move. And when you do a good job at the public development process, you improve your project response quality, you tend to get more projects interested in the community, looking at the community. The goal is obviously increased site visits and increased companies making investment in your community. And so, in this business development process, we really try to leverage all of the public development intelligence that will be created. The third thing we're excited about is an initiative we started about eighteen months ago called the Megasites Program. And the idea is very large, what we would call sort of transformational landmark projects. So, billion-dollar investments, big employers. They tend to require a lot more due diligence upfront that a community does before they'll even consider your community. So, they want to remove as much risk from a given community or a given site as possible. When I worked in the southeast, these programs are pretty common where cities and counties and states would partner to invest money into understanding a given piece of dirt better so that when a company came along and said, we wanna put a billion dollars in the ground somewhere, the community could respond more quickly and with more certainty than maybe a community that hadn't done the homework. So, when I moved back to Utah two years ago, I saw this program work in places like South Carolina and Tennessee and thought, there's no reason we couldn't do something like this in Utah. And in fact, we have done it and have started to see some success out of that. And the last thing is our marketing and research effort. As I mentioned, we have a significant investment in research data and materials. We try to take a database approach to all the decisions we make. Every dollar we spend, the ideas, will this dollar help generate a project that ultimately can land in a community in Utah? And if the answer to that is no, then we don't spend that dollar. Part of our marketing and outreach effort, we do targeted outreach, so if there were specific companies, as I mentioned, that you want in the city, we could work with you to go out and talk to those companies and make them understand what the advantages of Spanish Fork would be. And really, the marketing and research initiative is designed to help you leverage investment we're already gonna make to the benefit of the city. So, if we wanna jump through these one at a time, Public Development, this is sort of the mission statement. It's designed to help empower member communities with data marketing and strategic planning, tools to improve the lives of their citizens through economic development. So, really the idea is help you become better prepared for a project that might walk through the door. And there are a number of tools that Max has built inside this Public Development Toolbox. And I brought us some different materials, things that we typically use as we're talking about this. We've developed this concept of a development-ready community. And the idea is you go through this Public Development Exercise that includes assessments of the city, documenting what the assets are, the hard assets in the city, so things like infrastructure and utilities and access. Understand the makeup of your specific labor sheds, so where do you have unique densities? Understand the real estate that's available here. What are the pros and cons? What are the logistical pros and cons of the city? And really, turning that into your sales pitch for a company that's gonna look to come in. And so, Max is working with Dave as we speak. He actually sent me with some information that we've been building on behalf of the city to help start this process of understanding the city's economic development assets a little bit better. These are some of the publications, so again, I have copies of this I can leave behind, which is sort of the mission statement of Public Development. We've already been working on a strategic assessment for Spanish Fork and the idea is to look at your community the way a company from outside this market would look at your community. They're gonna dive into certain things, they're gonna look for specific strengths and weaknesses. And because we've been doing this for thirty years with ten thousands of companies, we have a good understanding of how they look at a community and where you're gonna rise and where you're gonna fall and hope you understand that better. And then we've got this Megasites Program that we'll talk about in a minute, that we're at an exciting part in in terms of some funding we've requested from the legislature that'll really help us scale this initiative up. Some communities we've already worked with and some of the results of that. So, Washington City has a pretty big retail initiative that we've been supporting, trying to grow their sales tax base. Orem Utah has a fairly large new development at the mall. They are targeting big office users and we've been helping them. We've been to San Francisco with the city manager and economic developer, looking for software companies that maybe could be a good occupant of that development. And in Box Elder County, they are very interested in Megasites. They've got a lot of heavy power, they've got a lot of heavy water and they feel like they're ideally suited to work with a company that might wanna come in and invest a billion dollars. So, again, examples of things we've been working on with communities already as part of our Public Development Initiative. So, again, the goal for this effort is to really help companies or communities be more successful in landing companies, which is really the core of EDC Utah's business, this act of working with companies to move to the state of Utah. And the key performance indicators that we report on regularly are these four numbers. So, how many projects have we won during the fiscal year and we run on a July to June? How many jobs have been committed in association with those projects? What is the capital investment that those companies have committed to make in the state? And what is the amount of square footage that those projects are going to absorb over their lifetime? So, to date through February, we've won nineteen projects that will commit to create about seventy-five hundred jobs, invest almost six hundred million dollars in building facilities, equipment, computers, whatever it might be, and absorb about six hundred eighty thousand square feet of real estate. The numbers in red there on the bottom, those were our fiscal year totals last year. So, we won a lot of projects last year. The unique item last year was that six point one million square feet of real estate. And that was because we had the Amazon Distribution Center, the UPS Distribution Center and a few other half a million square foot distribution centers that came to the state. In our thirty-year history, that was a record number. We've never even come within a million square feet of six million like we did last year. The other thing we track pretty closely is new projects into our system. So, the best measure of the success of our marketing effort is how many new projects are coming in the door. So, the blue number there represents where we were month over month for last year. The red is where we're at this year and we're tracking, I think we're one behind the pace of last year. So, we put a hundred and thirty-six new projects into our system last year. We're on pace for roughly the same this year. So, as we come up and regularly report to you on what we're doing and the success we're having, you'll see these two charts quite a bit that sort of talk about the success of our program. Some names, things you might be aware of. So, Adobe's big expansion up in Lehigh, a hundred million dollar investment, that was a project we've worked on. Stryker's building a new hundred million dollar facility in Salt Lake. LK, they make sinks and faucets. They're opening a big new distribution center operation up in Weaver County, Parker Hannafin, a big extension in Weaver County. Ernest is a fintech, so the sort of a combination of a financial service provider and a software company is opening up in downtown Salt Lake. And our big one so far this year is Snapchat. That's a project we worked on for about two years. We met with them for the first time in their offices and pitched them on the idea of Utah and they said we would never consider Utah and we kept at it and kept at it. We had the governor in Southern California once and he paid them a visit and said, we'd love to have you come to Utah. And about, I don't know, nine months ago, they called us up and said, hey, we think we might have something to work on. And long story short, they're gonna put fifty people to start, maybe up to two hundred people in a building in Lehigh. So, these are just six of the things we've worked on this year that have won. Like I said, there are nineteen on the list. They vary from hundred million dollar investments to ten-person operations making cutting-edge ski helmets up in Park City. So, we work on projects all shapes and sizes. We are location agnostic. We just want them to come to Utah. We wanna help communities understand what's best for them and help the companies find a spot where they're gonna be successful. Next, wanted to talk about Megasites. I think Spanish Fork, I think there's a lot of potential here for this Megasite initiative. So, the question everybody asks is what exactly is a Megasite? The general idea is it's a large acreage. In the state of Utah, we define a Megasite as four hundred acres or more. Extensively researched, typically they require an investment of one hundred, two hundred thousand dollars to do all the homework. Heavily infrastructure, piece of dirt in a community that is looking for a landmark project. And landmark is generally defined as a billion dollars of investment or a thousand employees. When we talk about a Megasite, what makes it different than a regular industrial site? The first thing is size, scale and scope, so we're talking big acreage projects. Four hundred acres, contiguous, non-divisible. The second thing is it's gotta either have existing or the potential for heavy infrastructure. And we would define heavy infrastructure as a half a million gallons of water a day, twenty mags of power, the ability to handle a lot of truck traffic. Generally, we look for multimodal transportation, so you wanna have probably a rail spur, you wanna have interstate or state highway access, you might wanna have airport access. They need to be in communities that are pro-manufacturing and that's, you know, some communities have decided they don't want manufacturing and that's okay, but we wanna make sure that communities understand a Megasite user is a big project. They're gonna have a lot of traffic, they're gonna have a lot of employees, a lot of benefits that come with it, but there's also things you need to consider. And lastly, is zoning and permitting fit. You wanna make sure that's all in alignment and that the community supports this concept of a Megasite user. The second big difference is around preparation. So, we're talking about a lot of advanced due diligence. We're talking about all the geotech, all the environmental, all the cultural resource. We're talking about labor studies, infrastructure studies, what's it gonna cost to get twenty mags of power, how long's it gonna take? All of that stuff needs to be understood to a fairly excruciating detail. We sort of somewhat flippantly talk about this, is we wanna get out of the I-don't-know business. Any company that comes to us and says, that power line's over there, what's it gonna take to get it here? We don't want the answer to that question to be, I don't know. We wanna be able to answer everything that they're interested in. We talk about prepackaged incentives, so having conversations as a body, these companies are gonna come and wanna know what sort of incentives exist on a state and local level. We don't ever want a community to be put in a position of figuring out what that looks like while a company's sitting on the other side of the table. So, thoughtful, advanced work around what's the community comfortable with, what are they willing to do? If they're not willing to do anything, that's fine, we just need to be able to communicate that effectively to the company. Again, a significant upfront investment, extensive engineering utility cost and tiny info. And the last big difference is on customers. We're talking heavy industry, people that need advanced site requirements. These projects are by definition infrequent. There might be two or three of these in the country in a given year. And again, we're talking a billion-dollar capital investment, thousand-plus jobs. To date, I think the biggest project we've worked on is the Procter &amp; Gamble plant up in Tremont and they're at about a half a billion dollars of investment over the ten years they've been here. So, we're talking about one user that would come in and put something in the ground twice that big. So, why do we do this? The first again is minimize risk, get out of the I-don't-know business. The second is to identify opportunities. I think the better that we understand what we're interested in, the better we can communicate that to clients. And the last is about exposure. There's a lot of these projects floating around and currently, they're not looking at Utah and we hope to change that. Process to date, so we have actually certified our first Megasite just down the road here in Ob- in Alberta. The LDS Church had a church farm that they were interested in putting into development. We were able to find some money with Utah County, put this site through the process of analysis, had an engineer that spent six months out there, poked a lot of holes, and completed the site in October of last year. We got about six bankers' boxes' worth of information and have our first site now completed in Alberta. As part of the next phase of this, we want to scale up the program. We've gone to the state legislature. We've asked for an appropriation to help scale up this program. That money will include funds to help communities match dollars to do a mega site certification in their community. So if there was a site here that you identified that you wanted to sort of get into this part of economic development, our hope is come March 10th that we'll have some matching money from the state to help cover some of those costs. The last part of my presentation that I think you can take advantage of is some of this marketing and research we do. So we do, as I mentioned, a tremendous amount of site selector marketing. This is, there's about 800 of them in the country. We bring a group of them out here every year. We go see them in their offices. We go to conferences where they tend to congregate. And we just pitch Utah and we pitch the communities in Utah. If there are industries as a community you determine you're interested in, is working through some of this public development process, you identify two or three industries where you think you have a unique competitive advantage, we would look to work with you to go out nationally and help market the community in those places to make sure that your name, the community's name, is known to those industries. We talk about lead generation, these GSNO missions, where again, as part of public development, if we identify a niche in Spanish Fork, we would work with you to identify companies nationally and get your name in front of them. Very seldom do we ever hit a company that has a project when we knock on their door, but the idea is can we plant a seed with them so that six months, or 12 months, or 24 months from now, when they're in a boardroom and somebody says, hey, we need an additional facility, or this office isn't working out, that somebody in that room will raise their hand and say, hey, I met some guys from Spanish Fork, and maybe we should take a look at that place. And that might sound far-fetched, but that happens all the time. And lastly, our research services. So we do business surveys of your community. We sort of call it 21st Century Business Expansion Retention. We've worked on projects with Salt Lake City, with Weaver County, with some other communities to help them talk to their local businesses specifically around, if you're a business in Spanish Fork and you have the potential to grow, are you going to do it in Spanish Fork or are you going to do it in some other community? And if you're going to do it in Spanish Fork, why? And if you're not, why? And in that, doing that sort of analysis, it can help you understand where your strengths are and maybe some things you need to work on. Again, we've done it in some communities, and it's uncovered a few really good gems for these communities that help sort of go into their strategic planning processes and help them do economic development a little bit better. We have cost comparison tools on a state and regional level. I brought copies of some of our research publications. So we build a lot of material around different industries that are key in Utah. We can customize these for your community, so help highlight manufacturing and distribution in Spanish Fork or other industries that you have a specific interest in. So again, we've got a lot of horsepower, a lot of capacity in our organization. Very excited. As Dave mentioned, I think I was here first time about 12 years ago. We've worked with you off and on over the years. I think there's a tremendous amount of potential in this community. I think you're in the right spot in terms of geographically where you're located. I think you've got the right kind of labor force. I think there's a lot we can do here and look forward to working with you on this going forward. That's the end. I'm happy to answer. Any questions or start over if I need to?
I don't think we need to start over, but we appreciate that. I'm sure if we've got some more questions, we can get with you and all that. But it's great service, and we appreciate you coming down and taking the time.
Excellent. Happy to do it.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scoob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got a public hearing, a proposed annexation policy plan. Who's going to come and talk to us about that?
Dave.
Oh, sure, he's out there. You're up, Dave.
Annexation?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Hey, we move right along here. We don't let any go. These scouts said move it, move it.
I feel like this is the, what, eighth or ninth time we've talked about this? Maybe it's just the second. Talked about it with the Planning Commission a couple times though as well. This is really what it's about, which is a new annexation policy map, which simply defines what lands. We in Spanish Fork are ready to potentially annex what we can legally annex in accordance with Utah code. This is a little bit different from the map that has been on our books for the last 15 or 16 years, in that the Enson-Bickford property that's someplace over here, currently, that's part of our plan, even though it's in Mapleton. So this adjustment would true up that boundary line to where it should be. We don't ever anticipate having those lands come back into Spanish Fork. We made a little adjustment down in the southern part of the community, in the vicinity of Woodland Hills Drive and Main Street, really because of Woodland Hills Drive and where that was built and how it's a little bit different from what I think some of our predecessors thought it might be when the first map was put together back in the early 2000s. And then just this past week, we made another little adjustment, which ties in directly to an annexation proposal that's on your agenda for a little bit later, over here in the vicinity of Spanish Fork Parkway and State Road 51, where there's some land that's not currently in our annexation policy. But the property owner there has worked with Springville, and we anticipate there being an adjustment hence what's referred to as the Steve Johnson annexation that we'll talk about a little bit later tonight. So really, those are the only three changes, but enough that we felt like here 15 years after the current version had been adopted, it was time to make some corrections. That's why it's before you. We have held a public hearing with the Planning Commission. They've recommended that this be approved. We've gone through the necessary public noticing to get this ready tonight for you after you hold a public hearing. If you want to act on it, it's ready for that.
I appreciate that, Dave. All right, I entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scoob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in public hearing now. Anyone that'd like to come and talk about this annexation policy, you're sure welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I think this is good policy, as it always is, for your annexation policy to be public, and here it is, public. I assume the Planning and Zoning Commission had some people question or talk to them about it as they went through the motions with this. Some, maybe?
Some, yeah.
Yeah. It's always one of those things.
Don't ask a question like that.
No, but it's always one of those things that we're approving a plan that goes into the future, and obviously, it takes steps for annexations to happen. But sometimes, as the council and mayor, we're looking at people saying, hey, you know, you okay with this? And they are. Usually, it's Spanish Fork doing the right thing. So I'm, that's a long way of, sorry, mayor, of making a motion, making a motion that we approve and adopt the proposed annexation policy plan as set forth. Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second one by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. FY 2018 Budget Revision Number Two.
This is the best thing for you guys.
Oh, yeah. Scouts love this.
It's candy time.
Can't.
Kent's got candy.
Uh-oh.
Candy man.
Be aware, guys, uh-huh.
Did you hear that? Oh!
You've got eight pieces of candy, and they're all going to be fighting one another.
Someday, you can run for city council and get a Coke. We've got empty bottles all up here. Coke and a sugar cookie.
First scout, give me the answer, get the candy. What does your parents' car run on?
Gas.
Perfect. What's the city government run on?
Coke.
What? Exactly.
Oh, he had money in his hand.
Should I try it? No. All right, today, we're going to talk about our budget. As you can see, it's revision number two. So we've already had revision number one. We set this budget back in June. And we had a revision in October, November, I think it was October. And then today, we're revising it again. And so what I'd like to walk through, and with the scouts, is talking about what our city is and how it runs. So scouts, pay attention. First is a guess, within $10 million, how much is the city total budget?
Spit it out. You're okay, go.
10 million. Anybody in the room, even adults? How many?
Five.
Five million. Seven million.
Seven million.
Nine million.
10 million.
11, 12, 13, 14, 15 million.
All right, I'm going to give you a hint. Watch the book. Ready? Watch.
Wow!
Oh, that's what it was before in revision one. Now, guess what it is? $93 million. Anybody get it right?
Yeah.
I said three.
There's two future city councilmen, right there.
Okay, $93 million, that's a lot of money. And we're increasing it 2.9 million tonight. But I'm going to talk about where those increases are and where's the city budget, okay? This document will be able to be found on the city website after, for those at home. In the city government, we have different ways to keep track of the city's funds. We have the general fund, we have enterprise funds, and miscellaneous funds. And that totals up the full amount. So there's the cut of the pie. The general fund keeps track of things, services, that usually are paid with taxes. The enterprise funds are paid with, like the utility bills that your parents pay. The miscellaneous ones are for capital projects, special projects for funds for accounting for those things, why they're being built. Okay, scouts, look on this chart. I'll give you a hint. Right here is the budget year we're in. So you want to look at the red column. So revision two, budget revision. How much does the budget for cemetery? Okay? Oh, yeah, find it. Okay, go ahead.
440,000.
440,000. $440,000 is the budget for the cemetery. Swing pool.
Wait.
Right here.
733,000.
733,000. You see that list through all of those services right there, scouts? Do you see any of them that you might do? Do you go to the airport?
Yeah.
Okay, you ever see the police department?
Parks.
Parks?
Libraries.
Library. How much is the library? Right there. Pretty close, 805,000, right on. Got it? Okay, I've got three more. We might have to change to a different screen. Those are a lot of things. What's the total for the general fund? The total for the general fund? Right here in the back.
25 million dollars.
25 million dollars. There you go. Nice try. All right, so we're going to go on. So our increase is $816,000. They're going to increase, and this is how the differences were done. If you look at this number right here, that's probably the biggest number. We're going to talk about that one a little bit as we go on. 400,000 just in the parks. Anybody like parks?
I don't.
Is it pretty good? Lots of good parks in town and trails and stuff? That's great. Here's the enterprise funds. This is another slice of that pie. $52 million for that. What's the biggest one on that page? Right here. What's the biggest dollar budget? The total's pretty big. Is there any of those individuals? What does it say? Electric. Mr. Electric? Good job. All right, and what's the smallest one? Right back here. What's the smallest budget in the enterprise? The gun plug. Good job. Hey, I'm all out. Now you can go back to sleep. Those are the enterprise ones. You see, they're all the utilities, the water bills, the sewer bills, the electric bill, the garbage bill. Sometimes garbage, look what we call garbage out here, we call it solid waste, another term for garbage. Okay, here we go. This is a lot of little numbers, isn't it? This is the enterprise fund and the enterprise fund. If you look at all those, that totals $78 million. Can you find that number down here at the bottom? $78 million. There's a lot of things on there. Can you find the rodeo?
Um, I'm right here. 226.
Right there? Very good. Sorry, I have a piece of candy for you. Okay, this is the third piece of the pie. This is, okay. Council's going to start donating.
Coke.
Oh, don't throw that.
All right, so this is that third piece of the pie. So we have general fund, that was 25 million. Enterprise funds, that was 70, no, 52 million. And then these are the miscellaneous funds. If you can see the miscellaneous ones, there's a road fund that we're now going to switch and not use it anymore. But there's the capital projects, the debt service, fire, and special revenue. But the only one that we're really changing in this budget time for this revision is the capital projects. And I'll zero in on some of those in just a minute. So the general fund went up 800,000, enterprises went up 1.2, and the miscellaneouses went up that much. So that answers the question of how much is this revision worth for the council to approve? Because the city can't spend those funds until the council approves it. That's why we have to have revisions for the, authorize the city to run and to spend the taxpayers' money. So there's the grand piece of pie again, for $93 million. For 93 million dollars, that's a lot of money, isn't it? Who thinks it's a lot of money? Adults here in the room, did you know it was that big? Any idea the 93 million? I would be surprised. Okay, in the general fund, these are some of the big increases. This is in parks, there's the Justice Center Park, the Legacy Farms Park. Anybody up on the east side of town know where Legacy Farms is? You see on Fourth North, the silo that says Legacy Farms? It's a park that's going to be inside that subdivision. And some new furnishings down at the sports park. Anybody go to the sports park? You'll be able to see new things down in the sports park and the dugouts. In the enterprise funds, these are a couple of the big improvements, just capital improvements in the sewer and the electric and in streets. Now we're going to talk about inside those capital projects funds. We have a fund, what we call land acquisition. Last year we funded that account with 100, with 1.5 million dollars. We purchased land throughout the last year and drew down that amount. And now we're going to buy a piece of property from Springville that's in our city but is owned by Springville, and so we're making Springville not own land in our city. And it's a purchase of 1,200,000. So with that, we need to transfer 500,000 more into this acquisition fund so that we can continue, so we could buy that property. This is the golf course. Anybody here golf? Hey, I'll give you a piece of candy just because you golf.
Yeah, give the candy to the golfer.
You golf?
I golf at my house. I do.
Keep golfing, all right? You golf?
I golf.
All right, so at the golf course, there's a budget and they're building a new clubhouse at the golf course and it's going to be great. It's going to be large enough we can actually serve meals at the golf events. The clubhouse that's there now is pretty small and packs people in pretty tight. So at the end of this year's, the budget's going to be 2.3 million dollars for that new golf course clubhouse. So this, in this revision, it's going to be adding another 400,000 in order to finish that project. The top of Center Street, anybody drive on the top of Center Street? Do you notice some of the houses are disappearing?
Chief, these guys said they were driving. I think they're a little underage. We better check that out.
Who has a car?
I do.
Did you go through up Center Street?
Yeah.
They're disappearing? Where do you think they're going? Little landfill? How many people usually get stuck in a line by that red light waiting? And that new street light's pretty fun? The street light's good? Well, it's going to get better because the city has got a grant and we're buying those houses and we're going to widen the road there all the way clear to Ninth East. So we're even going to cut in part of the school district property to make that a safer and a better, better road. Okay? And tonight, we're also approving the council's compensation as far as for the public hearing. The council works very hard, lots of hours, and for not very much pay. And the citizens ought to know that you do get paid, but let them know that you do work hard and you do earn what pay is there. It's not very much. And if you can talk to them, it's what, maybe $2 an hour? So it's pretty good.
A lot of cokes and sugar cookies.
So this will be part of the budget presentation as far as adopting that. As far as personnel, there's some positions that are being proposed. The new PIO analyst, that's a Public Information Officer. And sewer, someone to help in the sewer, the, out in the streets and the collection system and also at the plant. And the electrician will have an apprentice to learn the metering system and how the meters maintenance works. And also at the fleet, it'll be a part-time. So the first three are full-time positions and the fourth one is a part-time. Okay, along with this public hearing is the donation list. This is the only time that the council can add or subtract necessarily from the donation list. A lot of people will come to the city and say, will you donate for this cause? Will you donate for this cause? And so it's hard, it's hard for the council and for the staff to turn people away, but there needs to be a policy as far as how is the donations from the city and the taxpayers' money used. And so we've established, the state law is that there is a list and it's reviewed in a public hearing as far as the budget. And this is an opportunity, if there's any changes to that, if you've been approached or give you an opportunity to look at that. And in that sheet that I've handed out to you, the back page is the same sheet. So as this, we go on to a different slide, you can look at that during the public hearing, okay? So in conclusion, I've got one candy bar left. And how much was the old budget?
90.
90?
Million.
Very good. So I present this budget amendment number seven to the, or number seven, number two to the, I don't know where seven came from, to the council and to the public and for the public hearing.
All right, we need to go into public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone that'd like to come up and address the mayor and the council about this budget, you're sure welcome to come up. Be on TV and see the 20 million people that'll be watching you.
Not quite as many as the Super Bowl, but a lot.
A lot. All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scoob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any questions or comments about the budget? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept fiscal year 2018 budget revision number two.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scoob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Resolution 18-01, appointing board members to the South Utah County Valley Animal Shelter Service District.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, I say, take that, don't, yeah.
Thanks, buddy. No, I'm good, I'm good. See you later, buddy.
Come again when you're in town.
Thanks, Amanda.
Appreciate it.
All right.
He was just waiting for his bottle opener.
He said, yeah, he's been there this whole time. Okay, anyone want to talk about this one or are we just?
Animal Shelter Board.
Anything on resolution 18?
Oh.
That's 01.
Yeah, that's a big boy.
This is what's required by the animal service.
Very important.
District in order to seat their new representative. You, right? So instead of just simply accepting the name because the mayor said and the council approved it like we do most of ours, they've asked, they ask for a resolution, so that's what this is.
Do you even have an animal? Cat, dog? What is it?
No, our dog died last summer, so.
All right, I would entertain a motion on resolution 18-01.
You don't want to do it? I'll make a motion to approve, to approve resolution 1801, appointing a board member to the South Utah Valley Animal Shelter Service District.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scoob.
Aye.
That passes. Kier, it's all yours.
Yes, sir.
Go forth and serve. Okay, board appointments. I've got some board appointments on the senior board. I'd like to reappoint Jay Rinnessbacher, appoint Janice Orr to fill the position that Ron Lesenby has served since 2009. All in favor, say, oh, let's see, I'd entertain a motion on.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also, I would like to appoint John Mendenhall to the Planning and Zoning Board. Entertain a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Councilman Scoob.
Second.
Second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, proposed acceptance of the Steve Johnson annexation for further study.
Mayor, thank you. We're at kind of step one with this proposed annexation. It involves the council either accepting it for further study, which then really launches us into the formal process for reviewing the proposal. If we go that route, staff will do some work, we will notify some other jurisdictions and certain agencies as we're required to do. We'll take it to the Planning Commission to get the recommendation and then sometime, probably about 90 days from now, come back to the city council for a decision as to whether or not you actually want to annex this property or not. Or tonight, if you choose to deny the proposal, it just simply stops dead in its tracks. Substitute property here, not many acres. Actually, is that where we're at? I wanted to say it was a little bit more than that. But not a large site. Some of you guys will remember the Meadow Creek Ridge Town Home Project. This property is adjacent to that, so that's a project that's approved, but no construction started on it. It's located kind of wrapping around this home here in the vicinity of Spanish Fork Parkway and State Road 51. So this land, in fact, up until just maybe 20 or 30 minutes ago, was not included in our annexation policy plan. It is now. And as such, I understand that we can proceed forward with the annexation proposal. My understanding is that it's being proposed for annexation into Spanish Fork so that potentially, maybe likely, it could be included into the design for the Town Home Project here and simply be a part of that development. So if that happens, that's something that would come back to the council for your review on a separate tract. But long and short of it said, at least as we talked about it initially, as the Development Review Committee, we didn't see any reason at all to not proceed forward, at least with the review of the annexation. There's one other thing that's a little bit unique with this. This property, I think, is currently included in Springville's annexation policy. Their city boundary abuts the property, I believe, right here. And it's my understanding that our legal counsel and the applicant have both talked to Springville and their staff about the prospect of this property being annexed into Spanish Fork, and they've expressed support of that concept, I think for a lot of different reasons, speculating here a little bit, but this is property that we currently can serve with our utilities, whereas in Springville, for example, I think like we would be many, many years, maybe even decades before, they'd have the ability to serve any kind of development here. So that's just one thing that's a little bit unique about it, but again, the Development Review Committee has recommended that the council accept this annexation proposal for further study.
Great. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I propose that we accept the annexation, Steve Johnson annexation for further study.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scoob, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.[1767.54]